Was it important? Why didn't you call me back?
I was forgotten.
I'll have to get after it.
Okay, so I'm gonna follow any need order. Do I have a motion approved minutes?
I do.
Done a motion second, any discussion? If not, all in favor? Hosed, motion passed. More hill, you're kind of, you keep dressing up as Tim?
No.
No?
Well, alright, very simple. Fuel sales for the month of November, so it's total of one thousand five hundred and sixty-one gallons altogether. That's about a four hundred, four hundred gallon plus or minus difference from last month, or excuse me, not from last month, but from November of twenty twelve. In different cities, we sold fuel to forty-six different aircraft this, this year and forty-one different aircraft in November of twenty twelve. So, we're basically right on par with November last year. The final walkthrough for my fence is complete. Couple punch list items, we gotta put us up some dirt work in the spring, or I guess late spring, start drying up a little bit, but other than that, everything is done with that, everything's working good. And last note, the flight destruction that has been going on at the airport for the past three or four months, everything's going wrong with that. I'm not a part of that, I just put fuel in the airplane, but it's kind of nice to advertise that a little bit. Currently have two students that we got to start, and they're still actively pursuing a few more possible students. So, if anybody wants, if anybody wants to start learning how to fly.
Who's doing the instruction?
His name's Eric Becker, he's out of, lives out of Santa Claus. So, he does flight, starting at several airports around here, so. That's all I got.
It's nice to have somebody to teach the people how to fly, it's a good way to get more, more products and more things.
Yep.
Okay, Tom?
I don't have anything to report here, and it's got the sale of the police car on Jeff Gill. She can give you the information on that.
Can't pronounce the name.
Nothing.
From Doagusia, Pennsylvania.
Are you serious?
And, oh my gosh, you cut off the M.
It was what, twenty, twenty-five hundred dollars?
Twenty-four, yeah, what, twenty-five hundred.
Yeah. It's coming all the way in, next week, maybe everybody.
How many depends?
Yuri Velashovich, or something.
Yeah.
Run a car from here to another taxi cab out of it.
I don't get it, but they do it, so.
Yeah?
It's a good fair way to sell the cars.
That it?
That it.
How you doing with the traffic on the, our defense with the Polar Express?
Going on pretty well, going on pretty well. It's really busy down there on Friday and Saturdays, and Sunday it's not quite as busy, it's still too nice, so it's going along well. So, we're four weeks in, we've got two more weeks to go, plus they added on the twenty-first because of the weather date that they had back when the storms and stuff were coming in, they canceled the one, so they'll be done then on Saturday, the twenty-first, one, just one night.
Understood that got a little boisterous whenever they decided to cancel because of bad weather.
Yeah, they still had a lot of people showed up, I guess, that didn't know they canceled it yet, so. But, in interest of safety, I think they did, did the right thing on that.
Having people on those cars, if they run across a bad wind, was it?
Yeah, maybe.
Okay, Jason?
Yep. Think I've got the current agenda here. On the property at ninety-five twenty-eight West Hillside, they received second notice of cleanup October eighteen, and there has been some progress made there, but I'd recommend we keep it on the agenda, keep an eye on that one.
Okay.
On the Bron property on Sheffield Drive, there's been no progress made since the last council meeting. That one, I would recommend we just go ahead and take action on it and have the cleanup done, bill it to the owner. They, you know, within the notice, they get ten days to take action. They did start the cleanup process, it's been close to forty days now, since there's been, been any more cleanup done.
Did you take a truck after?
Yeah, it got moved, like, three days ahead of time.
They've got one truck still sitting there, but it's plated, it hasn't moved, it's plated. But as far as the structure itself goes, you know, there's been no improvement, I can tell, for the last forty days or so.
Okay, what's the motion canceled?
Recommendation to move forward, or is it moving forward?
Would you like a motion for that?
Sure.
Make a motion?
Yeah.
And a motion second, any discussion?
I'll give it a five, and we'll get somebody else to clean up.
Thank you.
Okay. So, since you're not pretending you're Tim, then you have to ram it. You sure? You're gonna come back and ask us something else later, aren't you?
You're gonna make Timmy work twice harder than I should.
Okay, would you like to talk about Humane Society?
Um, I can, I can just tell you today, I actually spent time with the Humane Society with one of the local vets, and we did do a home visit with Tabitha, and there is definitely, I am still accumulating information because there are no clearly defined heroes or villains in this entire situation. I, I will tell you that, that funding is a huge issue. I mean, I think if there was more money available, things would be a lot easier up at the shelter. And one of the things, they're getting ready to transport the animals, and they don't even have a means or any situation where they can shelter those cages as they load them for the animals. So, most certainly cutting off any funds is, is not at all helpful to them. I have seen the hoarding, the animal hoarding issue here in the valley, and that seems to be a big deal. So, I do think that the position that Tabitha holds is extremely valuable to the community, and I do think you probably need a full-time animal control officer. I'm a little confused, even with the situation we went to today, why action hasn't been taken by the health department? Because I think it's not only a hazard to the animals, but I can't imagine that it's not a public health hazard, some of the ways some of the animals are stored and they're being cared for. And we can, I don't really wanna start naming names and elaborating because I don't think that's appropriate here. But, I do wonder about the possibility of giving Tabitha some kind of budget to where she can pay surrender fees at the shelter when she does, when she does ask someone to give up their animals. Because that's a huge issue, I mean, the shelters already, I, just by the by, I did go through the adoption process myself with one of the animals, just to see how it works, so now I have another animal at my house. But unintended consequences of all these things. But, but I would, I would encourage you to possibly talk to Tabitha about the possibility of having some kind of budget available for her to be able to help these folks make good decisions about how they should surrender their animals. And, and like I said, I'm still, there's a lot of information to accumulate. I don't know how much time you guys have really spent up at the, at the shelter and really interacting up there and seeing what the day-to-day issues are, but they're huge. And again, please don't, please don't hold any more money, because if anything.
We didn't hold any, yes?
Yeah, well, well, it was late and coming, but it, it, um.
We planned three quarters and we've gone.
Yes, yes, but, probably, yes, it was due. But, I think now I've got the issue with, with West Bayden. So, anyway, we're, we're working, Tabitha and I are working closely together, and we're trying to integrate everybody into the process, because I think everybody's necessary.
I'd like to ask a couple questions, you've been around, you can probably help. The number of animals that come from the valley, is there any way to tell or know how many come from our town, Orleans, Paoli?
Really, honestly, I'm trying very hard, and I think first off, and again, we're in the holidays, I had twenty people at my house for eight days, so. And that's my problem, not yours, but I think the first thing that needs to be made, we need to have a policy and procedures manual written, so that we all know, I know there's.
At the county level, you're talking about?
Well, or even at the Humane Society, yes, at the county, yes, yes, we need a policy and procedure manual. And then we also need, we need, we need bookkeeping. But again, I encourage all of you to go up to the Humane Society and take a look at the office space that's available and what they're working with. And, and again, I mean, even today, to be perfectly honest with you, I'm covered in dog vomit and feces because I was shuttling things around today, and I had to prioritize that, I had to get a sick animal taken care of versus not being able to first for this meeting, so.
Mr. Coleman, when he was here, the night we all.
And he's in the hospital, just FYI, so he's all prepared.
We talked then about a certification program, and had to agree to go do that, to have the animal control person certification if the leader or whoever was hadn't made any headway to have it, and get yourself certified with that.
Well, I, I'm, I'm working on that still, Lynn's still trying to get that information, he's gone in the hospital in the meantime. And again, nothing was gonna be done on that till after the first of the year because of Tabitha's school schedule.
Can we talk, can we talk to maybe Paoli's officer and Orleans' officer, who were certified already?
Paoli's officer gave up the ghost.
And Orleans does not have one.
Right.
They don't have one.
We're the only ones that ever even approached.
Do we know who Paoli was?
I think Lynn did, yeah, he was the younger guy.
Maybe that fellow could tell us how we go about the certification. Because that seemed to be a real sticking point with him, that we didn't have a certified person.
Yes, I think, I think that's.
Remember from the meeting that night, that was, you know, when he stood there, he said, you know, your person's not even certified, and I said, well, if the person gets certified, are you willing to work with her? And that was the big contention, so we need to live up to our end of the bargain and get to that certification.
I, I don't disagree with you not living after, I'm just telling you that she's not able to get into the training till after the first of the year, and I kind of, that was part of, part of the things of my going in and negotiating how we could all work together.
We didn't know where the training is.
We do, we're having difficulty getting that scheduled, because Tabitha's tried, and I cannot, what is it called?
Um, he said it was a school in Plainfield, I was unable to find any school in Plainfield. The Indiana Law Enforcement Academy is located in Plainfield, I contacted them, they do not have a program for animal control officers.
Is it open?
She told me to check with Indianapolis Animal Control Metro Services. I have yet to be able to get ahold of anybody from there, and she has been, she has asked Lynn at the third board meeting for that information.
So, you're working on it, so?
I am, and I hate to, I hate to use those words because they disgust me, but yes, I'm working on it.
I'll, I'll also put in, call the mayor Jasper, I think they have a person.
Yeah, I would appreciate it, I mean, everybody.
I mean, if you guys don't want to help, I'll just.
I think, I think anybody getting involved in, you know, I would love to see, like I said, this, this board and West Bayden go up there, I'm gonna try and visit some of the White River, some of the other shelters to see if we can't come up with best practices, and we're just working on it, it's just been, to be quite honest with you, really daunting task, and many miles and many hours, and it isn't just, you don't just go in and, you really do need to talk to these folks, because every time I talk to somebody, somebody has a different opinion and a bit of insight, and again.
Well, the great thing, what, what you said that made a lot of sense was the policies and procedures. But once you set that, opinions don't really matter.
Well, and, and, but again, that's, there's gonna be some real debates.
Oh, sure.
Over, over sick animal treatment and.
But once you get, once you get there.
Yeah, but that's not gonna be.
No hill for a climb, no hill for a climb.
It's not gonna be a quick switch.
That's why you're there.
But I just want you to know that it's, it is, it is definitely, there, there are a few days go by that I'm not in contact with something or some, somewhat.
You can get it done.
Well.
David, I got a question, I was, seemed like I'm remembering Lynn said that the, we were asking them about representations from the county, either commissioners or council. Have you guys made an appointment for the Humane Society?
We had an appointment years ago, we haven't had one in the last four years. But I did volunteer to sit on the board a year ago, and they didn't really want me on there, and I understand, since they've changed the bylaws, but that's not necessarily.
The bylaws got changed or something?
The bylaws got changed, where it doesn't have to be a member of the board commissioners or council.
My whole issue on what you're talking about is, is the fact that you're giving them some operating money, you don't have anybody on board, you know? I think, you know, we've got you now.
Well.
We've been invited, we've been invited to attend their meetings, but we're not, we're not wanted to sit on board.
But if you're providing half of their funding, it would seem like you would have, should have a seat at the tables.
That's the way it would seem, and that's the way it follows until somebody changes the bylaws.
Where, where did you, where did you get the sense that you weren't welcome? I mean, is, are you personal, is that, I, see, what I'm getting is a lot of, this is the way it's always been.
My, my opinion, the last meeting I went to, there was a few hard feelings, I guess, afterwards, because I, you know, I basically told them, I said, you can't budget on what you think you're gonna need, you're gonna have to budget on what you know you're gonna get. And I said, maybe that means you're not gonna be able to take on all the animals that you want to, or you need to, or maybe you can't care for all the sick animals that you want to or need to, but you need to budget on the money you know you're gonna receive and all of what you'd like to have, and, and they didn't, they didn't agree with that for some reason.
So, my sense is, you're, you felt offended by it?
No, no, they don't.
Because I think, I think, I think the thing to do is for people to continue to attend.
I volunteered a long time years ago to sit on the board, as, as a member of commissioners, and, and they didn't want me on there because I never heard anything coming.
Well, I'd be more than happy if you'll attend a meeting to fight for your opposition there, because I think that's what we need, we need folks there, and, and just because you don't feel welcome, I don't feel welcome, particularly in a lot of places in France, but.
No, we've been, we've been, we've attended meetings, but we haven't been invited to sit on the board.
I think some of the issue too has been, has been the whole thing, that, that with a lot of folks around here, the solution is not the Humane Society, the solution is animal free bullets and arsenic. And I think there's a huge, huge gap to bridge in this community, and there's a lot of, a lot of, this is the way it's always been, and this is what's happened in the past, and I really, really would encourage all of us to look to the future.
Speaking of future, in conjunction with the training, my classes end in eleven days, and then I start my intern externship. Looks like I have an opportunity at Louisville Metro Animal Services to intern with them, to get experience. I need to contact them, I just got notifications from my teacher today, they're aware of, you know, what I've done in our community and stuff, and reached out to Louisville Metro. The only issue with that is I have to work thirty hours a week for my internship, and that would be driving to Louisville. And if the, between the two towns, if they could talk about gas or mileage in order for me to go down there, get experience, get trained through them, if that's an option, then I would be able to do it. But, at thirty hours a week, driving to Louisville, not having a job, that's just not feasible for anybody.
How many weeks, or is it?
It's three months.
Three months?
And I can do.
Three days a week, basically, or?
I would, yes, I would try to do three days a week, it would kind of be up to them. I have to go down there on Wednesday for schooling, so I would try, that would not count, I have to go regardless of where I work. So, I would try to get some hours in then, that way I'm already there, it's beneficial, and it wouldn't cost the town anything at that point, but.
So, what, what you're asking us for is if we'd have to with mileage and what else was it?
Just gas, yeah, that's it. And then, and I don't know if that, if we're unable to find the schooling, if experience, and if maybe I can get some training down there.
That might be a good question to ask the board, is if she does this program in Louisville, what survives with them?
We're already in the works, so.
I personally don't have a problem with doing that, I'm not interested in that, I mean, it seems like fairly economical, I think we talked about the training costing five hundred to eight hundred dollars, again, that's what mine was even a cost to them for me.
I'd be fine with that, I, I think more than we can help handling animals in an appropriate manner, that's fair enough.
So, if you guys wanna think about, in two, the next meetings.
We're looking right now.
Okay, go ahead, all right, next week's in two weeks, and then I'll be fine.
When, when you gotta go on your way, quit selling, okay?
Do we have a motion, or we want, by consensus, or?
I would think a motion would be appropriate.
I believe that we pay travel expenses for Tab to attend a three-month internship in Louisville.
If I have a motion second, discussion?
I think you need to be at the, whatever the federal mileage rates, fifty-five cents a mile.
Yeah, and different. What's your also parts?
Sounds good, yeah.
Okay, so, all in favor? Okay?
Thanks.
Yeah, that means you record your mileage, best thing is just get you a pad, write down every day, beginning, ending mileage, all that kind of thing.
Okay.
And then when you get it done, tear off the sheet, give it to the clerk treasurer, so that she can justify it. She needs that documentation and for you to certify that these are the miles you did and what you can do.
Okay.
All right, that sounds about right?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for you guys for your work, my pleasure.
Sorry you guys don't have seats, and have changed, sorry, just tracked me off.
Suggestion, I don't know, but if you can't find out about certification, I wonder if the Indiana, or the Cities and Towns Association.
I know.
Might have a contact for you, and they have a website.
I'll give them a call.
Oh, all right. I think they'll, all this stuff.
I'd do that tomorrow. Thank you very much.
I'll click them on, we'll see.
I'll read the other places where I was writing notes, so I, I don't know if that's good or bad, but remember stuff better that way. If that covers for you, then you had in here a note on the estate farm damage assessment on the F-350. You got that?
I don't.
You don't, okay, and we'll leave that one like.
I think so, it's getting fixed. And they have.
Yeah, it's in shop.
It's in shop, okay. We have, you have a closing bid, but you already taken care of that, and that takes us down to Jim Wagner's driveway. How do you get help on that?
I missed the last meeting, I'm not sure where we are.
Now, we, I just, we discussed a little bit last meeting, but my opinion is that we're gonna take over that road, and then those people back there, if you agree to be annexed in the town, I mean, I don't see them visiting town, but taking over that road, if we're not gonna gain any tax revenue, I think, and the people are out there.
John, you, could you not, were you not gonna talk to them? I thought last meeting, you said, someone, hold on.
No, I, I don't know that anybody said they're gonna talk about it, or talk to anyone in particular. There's five property owners on that road, recollection?
I will say this, I did talk to him before that last meeting we had, and I told him it's a possibility. I thought or felt that we might accept without any improvements, but, you know, at the moment. And I, I'll be, I thought you were gonna call me about it, it's a reason I didn't.
Okay, then, I, I'll, I'll point credit that I dropped the.
But there is, if somebody's gonna pay over.
Care.
Not that, not aware of.
Yeah, we had, there was, he had documentation that showed it, that's.
He showed it, whatever.
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm, I'm. That was about the same opinion, I, you, you're only gonna take a road over, you're gonna plow it, you're gonna maintain it from this day forward. I understand what you're saying about no improvements, but I feel like they ought to be in part of the town.
But, that was with annexation.
Yeah.
To annex.
Annexing.
This area in, without improvements immediately.
Yeah, and annexation, you know, it has to be contiguous, in other words, you can't have this property on or skip to this one. They all have to be contiguous, that's the way you get in, I did it, so, I know. But, your neighbor gets in, you get in, the other guy gets in, everybody goes in continuously, or you can't get them.
Okay, do we need to get something drawn up? Well, the, the first thing that needs to happen, somebody needs to talk, I mean, I would assume since he's the one that done it, he should be able to talk to all his property owners, if they're agreeable to be annexed in town.
Well, Jim, Jim was the first approach to us.
I ain't Jim owning the road, is that correct?
Jim could talk to those other property owners, probably easier, we could say, you know.
Well, or, I mean, if you want me to, if somebody will draw up what we need to, and get each property owner to sign if they're agreeable to.
Just, I don't know the rules on annexation, so.
You have to, you have to prepare the documents, you have to have public hearings.
Yeah.
That's what, do you remember?
Well, you were on board.
I was, I didn't know. But, yeah, there's a little process to go through, they ask me, post it so many days, and obviously.
Probably so, you know, you should be spinning our wheels, if one of those people out there, if they want to be annexed. That's what I'm saying, did you?
Yeah, part of that, part of that road, I don't know what survey he had, but I actually, my property survey from part of the fence up to my backyard back there. And my survey marketer, he's not down in the middle of that road.
You find it everywhere.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't know, you know, I don't know technically if he owns that, that entire road, you know, but I, I've kind of thought about, you know, personally, I mean, if, if town's gonna take care of it, town's gonna take care of it, but I use that road. The biggest problem I see with it is the fact that Dr. Cave, he has adhesion right down on the side, in between my house and his, and, and his, his office there, and I've ever seen one of those employees drive straight down that road, and they drive back and forth twice a day, use that road more than anybody.
Got an adhesion, you're saying that?
Well, that's kind of, I thought he got an adhesion to use, if not, then I kind of thought that if anybody wants that property fixed, I think everybody could probably get, get together and put some money into it and have it fixed up and it'd be a nice road, that's kind of what I thought, but nobody else kind of seemed to want, want to get on board, because Mr. Wagner has expressed to me more than once that that road belonged to him, that I'm not driving my four-wheeler down that road, so.
He, he does have a D door.
Well, okay.
And the property, they're having adhesion, I guess.
It's a highway all the way to.
The property owners like Reagan's and some of those have an adhesion, to use that road to drive away.
Probably just have his permission because.
It's, it's, it's a mess, you know, I don't, I don't go all the way back there to his property, you know, it's a mess, I just go to another one right there.
Like, it'll all be fixed if they want to annex it.
It could all be fixed, it's, it's, it's not, it's not getting that.
Jim encouraged me to run this court, and I talked to him after, I brought it up, and I get the impression that annexation would not be a problem with him, and so if it's not yet, I know it's not realistic. And I'm sure it wouldn't be the right.
I don't think they have a problem with, not at all.
Well, let's get, let's find out, if they're good, then we'll get them.
If they voluntarily annex and it's a hundred percent, the procedures cut down drastically.
Well, it's clean.
Yeah.
If you get somebody objecting, that's where you get into.
Right.
Why have some people object?
But that, Dave, that's what I was thinking. To you, would he ever do that?
Well, that, that, that would be.
You didn't.
And I don't want, I don't want.
That's what I was getting at, you know, if somebody wrote something on a piece of paper, that I can talk, I can. Does it, Jim? I don't think it necessarily anything a piece of paper, I think it just goes in, if they're agreeable to it, they'll go through the proper process.
I don't, I wouldn't think you'd wanna have anything signed.
Yeah, I don't think you need to sign it.
They probably wouldn't like it.
I think you just need to talk to them all and say.
Just to make their arrangements, don't they?
Then, then, then we can do it.
I'll take care of that in order of next meeting.
All right.
I apologize, I've been.
That's all right.
I'm, I'm remiss in part of this. You're not ever supposed to have mentioned wrong, right?
We're not wrong, we're getting older, but forget it.
If I didn't get it done, that means I did.
So, I've got sticky notes all over my desk.
I suppose, I think you're supposed to wipe fuckers in Berkeley.
Well, I, I would wipe that, but it's not me.
Okay, so you're gonna talk to Jim, we'll come back next meeting, and also work on getting a procedure for, for how we would proceed for what's out there. Kathy, you're up.
Uh-huh, okay, well, as you know, we had a Renaissance special in April, we ended up with fifteen hundred people instead of five hundred that we were expecting, and parking was a very big problem, we have decided we're staying at Sleeping Mary again this year, or for two thousand fourteen. We have decided we're staying at Sleeping Mary again this year, or for two thousand fourteen. And we would like to see if there's a possibility of using airport for parking.
Provided issue. When you talk about.
We talked to two guys.
Wherever they put us at, we'll take anything.
How do you get them, how do you get them airport back down there?
We're, uh, we're trying, we'll probably have eight waitens and pickups more than likely, or we may get a bus, we don't know yet.
I don't see a problem with this, but I.
That was our main problem last year with parking.
In, in, in this circumstance, you've got, you've got liability for your, for your fair, correct?
Yes.
Does that also include transportation?
Probably, I'll have to check to make sure, I think they did when I talked to them last year, but we didn't need it last year.
Okay, and they, if, I would think that would be one. Two is, the, the difference in the town is that the airport is a standalone entity. We appoint to the board, but we don't have physical control, so they're actually the guys you're, you're making the pictures.
I assume you guys, liability insurance thing for the.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, they might want to add as an additional insurer or something like that.
Yeah.
I mean.
That's why I think.
See, I see a problem with it.
Now, Loz, what about the new grass seeds that were diverted from Indiana, do you own or?
I do.
As of April twelfth and thirteenth.
I mean, much range for a week.
Please don't even say that.
It, it, it has been known to do that.
It has been known to do that. However, Renaissance festivals go on, rain or shine, so. The tickets are sold, we have it.
We do understand. Uh, I would think you'd need to get a motion from the air board for them to do that. All we can do is make recommendations.
Next meeting is or whatever.
Okay.
And, uh, also I would, you know, we had the light parade on Saturday evening. Small, but it was very well lit up, I mean, you could see it going down the street, so that was good, it wasn't like it was, you know, kind of, it wasn't lame, it was very good. Um, a lot of good entries, and I wanted to thank the, uh, police department and the street department for helping out to get the roads closed and make sure everything was safe for the people to be out on the street and let a lot of people watch and people had a good time. And we appreciate you guys saying the streets could be closed and, well, also appreciate the town's will and issues of parking law and the tourism and all their support.
I, I think everybody deserves credit for, for putting on a nice, a nice piece.
Yeah, it was a nice night.
You said there wasn't a lot, a lot of units, but the ones that were, they were well, well done, they were, yeah.
Yeah, they were very.
You have it, you have every year, it, yeah.
Well, I think having a Thanksgiving weekend was not a good weekend, that, of anything. Uh, it was my twelfth, it was my thirty-ninth wedding anniversary. So, I was at a party. See, that's commitment. And then we're, we're planning on sponsoring again next year. Hopefully different matter.
So, did you get, so, are you able to get it in the paper for who won and your awards and things?
Well, of course.
I just, I was curious, I didn't know if you, I didn't know if you referred that to miles because you were conflicted.
No, I, I wrote it myself. However, I could use more pictures, because we, my little camera down in that parking lot, the pictures, there's, there's too, there's too much light for the flash to go off, but it's not light enough for it to be a good picture without flash.
Trying to take pictures like that is, is insane.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have any, you, you need a really good DSLR to do a job on that.
Yeah, and my little camera's just not capable of doing that, but, you know, it's what we work with, so, what we got.
Okay, well, best of luck and, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys did a very nice job last year.
I've been here in, uh, you know, there at the hotel, been hearing a lot of compliments on the lights downtown, saying, you guys really in the street park and everybody involved, did a great job there.
Yeah, we do apologize for the, uh.
The fire?
No show.
Fire?
No, well, that, that was not, not my doing. But, uh, the, the, the show was canceled this past weekend, do some, some technical difficulties that was out of my control. But we'll fire off this weekend and, um, it was only gonna run, I guess, in the weekends, but I can make this thing around all week to make up for it all the way up till we stop, so.
I think the Christmas decoration looks, like, it looked the best it looked from here.
I like it, it's spread out.
With the parking lot done down there, it's spread out, it's not all crammed together.
And, you know, we, there, there's a little bit of surplus equipment that, uh, we, we got overzealous, we ran out of time once, so, you know, we're able to take our initial investment that was, seems steep to some people, but, you know, over the next few years, we don't have to ever do that. We can just reuse and re-innovate our designs and expand that up towards Brick Street or Maple Street and incorporate more ideas and, you know, we got a lot of new technology that allows for that to happen through wireless communication and stuff, so.
That's very nice.
The last one, so.
Okay, uh, questions, Dave? I'll pass, John Henry. Marlene?
I have only one thing, and it's, um, I've been getting some calls about, um, about our second phase of our street projects. We talked about that, you know, at election time, of course, instead of doing, how to get art with some. And, um, we haven't done anything, we've got some early to add roads in town. And what do you guys think, what are we gonna do, but do we have anything in the?
Well, I can tell you, we're getting ready to start Larry Bird, and one thing we're even talking about is trying to get some new districts down here this next year.
Once we get through Larry Bird, so.
In fact, I had somebody come to me today about one of the streets, and a lot of, there's still a lot of bad streets.
I think a good, good way to do it would be all of us to get together and do it right around town and try to identify some areas.
Good down on that.
Say, okay, you know, and then there are, there's some really bad ones, we, we've looked at them before. And the fortunate thing about it is, three belt and money will be coming in, and it's not obligated, and hopefully we'll have some bonds paid off here in the town too soon, so. I'd say the next two years, you're gonna see a huge difference.
And as we do streets, we would, most of the streets we do, we've also got to remember on how we handle the storm sewer runoff at the same time. Because most of those streets are gonna have to have.
New York, New York street up there's really bad, it's, it's a runoff nightmare.
I think when you look at Jackson, New York, and all those up on that, all the street and all that up in there is tough. I think you got some streets down in, you know, in the bottom, down in the high, in the city back in there that are, that need some work. Roy Dale probably speak to that better than anybody, he sees them every day.
You're not gonna say they're all good?
No, we're not all good.
No.
Yeah, we're, we're more.
We'd have to ask what you're wrong if you said that.
I'm just, I'm just checking, I.
A lot of them is bad, too.
Yes, it is, uh, we're, this is the last piece that we think we got for good, so. My hope is that we can take some of this money and, and do a pretty good hit on these streets. Anything else, ma'am?
That's it.
Okay, Karen.
Okay. Um, the nepotism and conflict of interest, I think Marlene has hers and Dave, you need to complete yours. You thought yours was barely, but yours, it's just Dave and Marlene's, I think, so.
Yeah, we definitely.
So, have you got a copy to complete, Dave?
You emailed it to me, didn't you?
Barb did.
Yeah.
Okay, I just need to make sure we have those done.
If you have a hard copy, go off it right after me.
Okay, I can get that for you. The other thing is that, uh, on the, um, Indiana public retirement system, the employer share contribution rate will increase to seven point seven five percent again on January first.
What is it now?
It is six point two five percent.
Wow. One point five percent?
Yeah.
Take that kind of joke last year?
I don't think so, no.
Six point five for years.
That's, that's an FYI for you. Um, did you get a chance to look at vouchers?
I'm leaving. I have a motion on vouchers, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
I have two because of, I mean, in November and December.
Posed? Assuming you'll oppose.
No.
Didn't hear anything. Come on, guys, let's, let's keep it going.
Okay, the other thing I'm gonna do is, I'm kind of going off clerk treasurer, I'm going to represent tourism.
Okay.
Um, they are requesting, um, they, they did quite a bit with, with everything on the parade. They had, um, a magic show and did some other things this fourth, and Sam, you might be able to help me with this. Um, you know, had further crowds for people to do, so they're needing, for right now, just like five hundred dollars to kind of keep them afloat of, of taking care of all of the activities they've been doing, so. There was, there was a lot of advertising for the Art on the Green and things like that, that was done, so this is kind of all the things that they've been doing, it's kind of left over.
This could be a part of the year?
Yes.
I think a good idea to have is every time, next time.
It's just running a little close.
Just, uh, see, do you need still, uh, contributing?
Yes. They will reimburse for a lot of the advertising costs, but not all, not all.
So, if we do five hundred, we'll, we'll be good to go for now, the rest of the year, no.
Right. Exactly.
I'm gonna pay with it.
Oh, it's Thursday.
I got it. Man, it's more than three. It may seem like it, but I think it's more than three.
Not much.
I got a motion for, uh, for a five hundred dollar commitment for tourism. Do I have a second? I got a second, any use? Okay, discussion? If not, all in favor? Posed? I feel you're playing one extension. I thought you just made that contribution. I'm coming.
Probably make a lot of it, I don't even know about.
There's a chance, yeah. Okay, any question? Now, um, the other question I've got is that you have not decided to change your mind and stay as clerk treasurer, have you?
No, sorry.
Sure?
Yeah. Not within the grand baby now.
What are priorities that you got?
I know.
Okay, so you're not, so that means we're looking at a new clerk treasurer at the, uh, January one.
That's correct.
That being the case, I'd like to make a suggestion to the board that we, the, the clerk treasurer has been part-time at this point. And that we roll that into a full-time position.
I completely agree. I mean, it's way, way, way overdue.
Um, I would also recommend that, given what we're, we're paying now, that we make a, we're plan on collapsing it down so we would have two people, we'd have, uh, one person in the office and then the clerk treasurer, but the clerk treasurer being full-time. And in discussions with you, you thought that would probably work out?
Yes.
You said for budget, when you lose your mind?
Right.
Okay. Ain't budgeting wonderful?
I think, because of getting the new software, and I've said this before, it's gonna streamline the bookkeeping, bookkeeping so much. I hope that's what it does, but, I mean, from everything I've seen, it's going, it's going to do that, whereas we're having to do things in maybe three or four steps now. It's gonna cut it down to one. So, in time-wise, that's, that's really gonna help me.
No matter what's put together, you're only gonna, you're only gonna, you're only gonna get what they give you. The budget I want to.
Exactly.
Basically, only get what the state, okay?
Well, I would, uh, I would move that we, we update the salary ordinance, which will be coming up by the next meeting. That we move the clerk treasurer's position full-time at the salary of thirty-eight thousand dollars. And that, the clerk treasurer should be able to, their insurance and, uh, and that, uh.
Is it?
I think so.
And it would limit, and eliminate the one position, uh, from the office of the, of, from the, uh, the salary ordinance.
Discussion.
I think it's a good play, I think that, um, you know, like I said, eliminate the position is a separate deal. You have to do that first, and I, I would say that I, I would support such a move, providing that six months from now, we don't have somebody come to us and say, okay, we need another person in the office. I wouldn't be in favor of that. I don't know about how you guys feel, but it, it appears, the, the appearance is, as Karen said, it's gonna get a little easier with the new, uh, software, that we wouldn't need that second office person if we had a full-time clerk, correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's, that is how I would perceive that the, the workflow would go.
All right, it's not going to be a heckworry.
No, that's how the workflow would go, period. And that would be the reason that I would, would vote for it, is I think it makes sense and I think it, it gives you an opportunity for, uh, for a decent job, and it's a, it's a full-time job.
It's a full-time job, a decent job. Still, the lack of position.
Yes.
I think that, uh, there is some responsibility there, you know, you are the only person that's financially liable or not financially, legally liable to the town's finances. We can sit up here and do dumb things, you know, clerk treasurer lets us get by with it. It's the clerk treasurer who winds up having the issue most of the time. That's why it's, on the Indiana side, we have trouble keeping clerk treasurer, I think, what is it, forty percent of them resign in the first month or two?
Yeah, six months to a year.
Yeah, I've said, I've read that.
Yeah, you say, well. I can tell you that.
One term will not be.
And anybody that does clerk treasurer shot has my admiration, so.
Bright side, it will save us, what, about ten thousand dollars if we do that?
So, we're looking at clerk treasurer, thirty-eight thousand insurance and per, we're eliminating one clerk as that piece. And that's within scope of the, of the board as the balance, in fact, that we've allowed the clerk treasurer, because it's part-time, you have two full-time employees. Moving clerk treasurer to full-time means that we're gonna eliminate one of those full-time employees as of January one. Correct?
Correct.
I'm for smaller government, okay? I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll share.
Okay, got a motion and second, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Fair enough, we'll look forward to the, uh, salary ordinance come next meeting.
Okay.
Anything else? Anybody else got anything?
As a matter of fact, yes.
Yeah.
I'd just like to, uh, ask the council if they've discussed anything about Beachwood Avenue, I know they had a discussion about five months ago. Reason being, the bridge there, uh, right in the corner, is gonna have to be replaced in the next thirty-five years. On Beachwood Avenue, the, the big concrete bridge out there, it's past D P's right now.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's scoring very low on our grade inspection reports every year, and sometime within the next thirty-five years, it's gonna be replaced. That project in itself is not big enough to warrant federal funding, but I know there's been talk in the past of Beachwood Avenue possibly raising the elevation of that road to keep from flooding. If the town was working in conjunction with the county on these projects, you own the street, us own the bridge, the total project would qualify for federal funding, which would lead the town and the county to do a twenty percent match. Uh, I talked to a consultant at the, uh, engineer who's down in Marksville, and I'm a consultant, and, uh, they looked at the bridge, and, uh, the reason I'm, I'm bringing this up, because Indus got a call for projects out right now, but it's got to be submitted by the fourth of this month. There'll be another call later on in the year, and this will probably be in two thousand seventeen, so there's, you know, call for every person. But if it's something that you'd be interested in doing, uh, and you can look at it, see what you think. Like I said, combined target, I don't think the road by itself would be, uh, you know, uh, big enough to, to warrant federal funding, but the road and bridge together would. So, when the side sets pays, like, to see counties, the town working in conjunction with each other, they like to give money to things like that.
I feel you're able, as a county, you're able to come into the city and listen to the bridge. So you're able, as a county, you're able to come into the city and listen to the bridge?
Well, we're responsible for all the bridges, all the bridges, all the bridges in the county within the state of the center of the area. So, that being the case, uh, I don't know if you, like I said, if you've had a chance to look at it or discuss it at all.
We've had, uh, I've had some discussion, we've had some general discussion, uh, I think it makes great sense.
It needs, we, we need to get something, you know, uh, moving, uh, within that, get it scheduled, uh, because like, secondary schedule about four years out. And, uh, I'm about to push right on.
So this would be something that'd be for four years out, or something?
Yeah, talk about the project cost, don't you mean the building numbers?
Pardon?
Any ideas on numbers of the cost, bridge side?
No, uh, we're looking, we're looking probably, the bridge and road combination's gonna be probably a big increase.
So twenty percent match?
Twenty percent match. Uh, the bridge by itself, we can probably, the county would replace the bridge if necessary, and, and like I said, we're gonna have to.
Would it be twenty percent totals or?
Twenty percent total match or twenty percent total. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, because of what's.
We'd be crazy. Yeah.
I mean, the, the bridge, if, if we replace the bridge, it's gonna cost probably a hundred and forty-sixty thousand dollars to replace the bridge. Uh, the bridge and road together, if, if we do, and we would like to do a, a slide real line with the creek, and you're probably gonna do a slide real line with the road and straighten it corner, just a little more. But, uh, and, and the elevation from the highway back probably past D E's, we keep that road flooding and give you access during some later.
I'd say we miss, whatever need to get done, dog, I mean, we'd be, you'd be crazy to pass.
Well.
How bad's the bridge, how bad's the bridge on Monongahue Street for, and what about the government today?
That is, that's an evidence for a day. And that's gonna require road color. It's inevitable, we'll be coming there probably in the next eight to ten years. There's a lot of these old concrete bridges around here that's deteriorating another three hundred years old. Uh, I'll be in and out for some extra days, I'll talk with, uh, Mark, we're gonna treat that, I'm, I'm, he's, he's the consultant I've been talking with on the bridge. If, uh, if you would want to look at the entire project, you can get a, a price on it.
Sure.
And, uh, I don't know, it, it's probably a little late now to get the, uh, the project into, end up by the Fortune this month, but there will be another call for bids, or call for projects, uh, later on this year. So if we get it in then, then we can get it scheduled for, for seventeen.
What do you guys think?
I think it very soon. I, I think so.
I didn't.
I'll talk with Mark then, and if he's got time to come and have a look at it, bring his car down, and, uh, take a look at, uh, and they can draw something up, put some, put some prices on it, and, uh, we can get, uh, get something obtained by then possibly, and, uh, get the project in the works for, uh, two thousand seventeen.
Where's the line from us to you on, on, where, where does, where does county property start going out?
That has.
Just past wood design.
Actually, actually.
Just, just at the edge of the, the parking lot, I think.
Well, actually, the, at the back, back, two hundred and twenty feet of that, that last addition they put on is actually in the county.
Yeah.
It's not a lot.
Well, you got a new parking lot across the road, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure where the line was.
Right, that general.
I was exactly, that's right.
Yeah, that's your.
Well, I would, I would support doing that, just because that's, that, that gives everybody another flood road back out, which is something that's really boring. We had a general discussion, it's probably me for not getting that, we, we, we talked about it, and thought that it sounded like a generally good idea, and I didn't get enough detail.
Well, I talked to, I talked to Mark a couple weeks ago, and he asked me if we've ever done anything, I said, well, I, I intend to get down to council meeting, you know, a long time before this, and then, and talk with him, but things happen, you don't like it.
Ghost bats.
Thank you. Only turns into pride pretty fast, yeah, and the first turns into thirty, thirty.
But anyway, I'll, uh, I'll see him tomorrow and, uh, and let him know that, uh, you guys are good to go, and, you know, if he wants to take the whole project, then you're fine with that, as far as consulting.
Well, I, I think that's all, maybe really, a logic, but you know.
Yeah, I have a seat, trade group.
That'll work, work very well.
Okay.
Good, yeah, we're absolutely in.
All right.
Yeah, um, somebody was in there, you know, that wanted a reading, and they were telling me that you guys are bringing my property up a lot. Is there any way to steal side drive?
Jason.
Yeah, there was, uh, we had a hearing, it was out a month ago, I'd have to pull paperwork on, there was two letters sent, and then I noticed.
No, I have nobody sent me the letters.
Yeah, they came back, they were certified letters, and they came back unsung.
Well, they don't have them.
From that address.
Well, what's the problem up there?
Property cleanup, their property cleanup, nobody said.
Well, I, uh, had somebody there helping me clean it up, and, uh, we burned a lot of this stuff up, up there, there ain't that much up there now, so there should be more complaints about it. What is up there, I asked the town to bring a truck up to help me haul it off, and they said they're gonna charge me. I'm on a fixed income, and I can't afford it. So, if you guys really want, wanna help me, that's fine, I mean, but if not, then you're gonna have to wait on my time period to get it done.
The reason that we aren't sending trucks up is because we went into, uh, two or three instances where folks were quoting specifically some tree cutting, and they were quoting cheap price, and they had, and, what was, the one was like six or eight truckloads?
Or more.
Or more, and a tractor to load the stuff that they had, and they just assumed the town was gonna pay for it. And what you went into is you get a case of some bad actors, and it, it causes hardship on everyone. And we had changed our rules, and we weren't gonna come up and, and do any major, uh, hauling of trucks or, or limbs or things like that without being charged.
And then you're gonna have to wait on my time period again, because I had somebody there to help me do it, and would all been done.
How much are you talking about, sir?
Well, there's probably a truckload up there, but I'm not physically able to do what I used to do. And I just had to come to that agreement, and, uh, so when I get help, that's when I get help. Matter of fact, I rented my house out up there, 'cause I moved down so I could fix it, do the inside properly, so move things room to room, and they agreed to clean it up. So they did a lot of the cleaning up there. Um, there's an old freezer and an old refrigerator down there, which is not mine, and they're supposed to kinda take that stuff up there. So I had the old chimney tore down, had to do it and put up, uh, all the bricks and stuff's gone out there. I mean, I don't know where, too many people complain about my place, because it's not near as bad as a lot of other places, and I'm not gonna get no names or names, because, I mean, that's their business.
We understand, sir. Uh, well, let us take a look at it, and we'll see if there's anything we can do to help that, okay? And we appreciate you trying to clean it up. Okay, anything else, folks?
Uh, when will you let me know?
Uh, I need to talk to Tim, and I need to talk to Jason, and, and it'll give us at least a week, all right?
And then, then, you guys don't, you're gonna have to kinda wait on me now, 'cause, uh, I gotta have help doing it, and I can't do it by myself.
Let's take a look at it, okay?
Okay.
Anybody got anything else, sir? You want OCD state report? No?
I've never done a report.
In that case, folks in the jury. And then, folks, thank you very much.